Listen in, in the place.
Dear Father, thank you dear Lord for this case. Thank you, Lord, for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way with the reasonable portion of our life, health, and strength. Yes. I would ask you to be with us during this meeting, Lord. Let something be said and done to the to the betterment of the town of South City. Please another blessing there and do this name, amen.
We want to find and form success with our strength, our new partnerships and
Obviously, it's safe, prosperous, and driving home. Or diversity and options that we can education drive success and grow the good competitive society.
Oh, amazing adjustments.
Mary, there's a new gym on the table with seven point one new business. Resolution of funding legislative provision of local government zoning.
Looking at which may include adjustments to these.
Second, there were approved adjustments to their agenda. Let me know my son. See, I'm the same right here in March and Karen. Then second that the agenda be approved, all they let me know my son. Then we second that the consent agenda be approved. All always they let me know my son about. All the both have the same right here in my new motion carrying. All right, what would come in? Uh, Mr. Jimmy Foo, here come board, state your name, managers.
Please. We tell them long. This be remark. As boys, I appreciate the report you should award. But I wouldn't somehow know we would have some kind of workshop on this, explain it. It's too many. The number of them, but I don't know to y'all really. Compared to what I would mean every night. Ray about their water being pure, it's so clean, you know, sounds so good. And I just have a few comments about the taste of our water, you know, and I don't know what happened, but they said it's got a funny taste to it. I'll refuse that one. Okay, now, uh, another point is that I hope that we can work out something. We keep our plan, I'll be one, and so will in South City. That would be, I would do this. You know. I hope that you all. I want that they develop it. Industrial. In fact, everybody does approach. I didn't have citizens. They have a car in life. The color. In those feelings back in the spring, a lot of children. They were stressed out and they're friends of lovely girl. They have no outlet. They can do it on each other. When I can do the same thing you say in your house, you're everything I was saying in my house, that's what I do. So there are just few ones that I, you know, to express. Yeah, we can do that. We don't do our motion, bro. Rebound and, uh, not in J. Paul's name.
Uh, yeah, no, but I always like to address what's the longer I think you saw with the algae and what is going on there. And we're giving the DQ to implement a new chemical uh, that they hope is not hazardous for human consumption. So there is some work being done on that uh, in that arena. The big thing that you said in which was part of the last thing is, well, you'll hear it shortly about this resolution that the town is joining in. So, uh, some of that will be addressed today, this evening. So thank you. All right.
Presentations.
Presentation five point one, National Police Week. Proclamation.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like for you or Commissioner Mayor Fred Tim Bailey to read the National Police Week proclamation?
I think we need, uh, we didn't even go and read that.
Town of South City proclamation, National Police Week two thousand twenty-five. Whereas there are many eight million thousand municipal officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the South City Principal. Since the first accord of seventeen eighty-six, there are more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States that have been sacrificed and been pure in the land. And as a function of concerns of police survivors, cops, organization coordinated and dedicated to the first observed National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day of two thousand fifteen. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers' Remainer in Washington, DC. And whereas millions of fine heroes are honored to law enforcement officers remaining this spring. Clean officers killed in twenty twenty-three and officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the United States with the United States remain from thirty-seventh ten. Thirteen, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas the Canada vigil is part of National Police Week, which was observed this May eleventh, June seventeenth, whereas May fifteenth was designated as peace officers remaining by of all of our fine officers, bandit fans in West France, with the Florida back staff. Now, this is the town of South City. The state of North Carolina, South City, the board of commissioners, do hereby recognize May eleventh, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five of National Police Week in the town of South City and perfectly salute the service of law enforcement officers who are moving across the nations. And when they arrive, South City, they fix this, I think, the of May two thousand twenty-five.
I'll be free to be covered a lot of proclamation. I just will add that since last year's event, they had the national there've been three hundred and forty-five officers killed in the United States. Their family, their representatives of various law enforcement agencies, they're following travel to Washington to memorialize the ultimate sacrifice of the brave men and women. Um, I know I've been there before, and I know the lady has been there. Uh, it's a solid event. Um, the men and women of South City Police Department, this is just some of the that are here tonight. We have our problems every time they come to work, sir, in our community, not only if they're already home safely. Um, they're only forty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, no matter the weather, against disasters that are going on, they come to work. Uh, they're willing to face the dangers that exist and they uh, and they see things they cannot unsee. Uh, there's other tragedies that the current office, but not necessarily there. It's also the mental health aspect uh, that they face. So everyone's must carry only sacrifice so the officers can come serve our communities. Um, there's a quote attributed to Edwin Burke that says, the only thing necessary for evil is for good men to do nothing. Uh, John D. T. birthday says, great old man, look, man, and this, and a man lay down his life. I would have a woman for that, lay down his life for his friends. So our officers come and serve each year knowing it is a possibility. They may not, they may have put their life in danger for the good reputation of this community, but they come to work. Knowing that. So I would think there are teams and government commissioners fully acknowledging this weekend for support of police officers with this population. So, okay.
So we can do it. I'm a pitcher. See, if you can space out one of the most most your category, it's just some kind of
This has been long. Thank you very much.
And then we're glad that you asked about what you are, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, man, night shift, I mean, yeah, night shift is rough. Professional. But this one third week I've asked, I wish you moved to read that. Uh, proclamation.
Town of South City proclamation. Fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May fourth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of this state from provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, we proclaim that I, the board of commissioners, mayor of the town of South City in the state of North Carolina, on behalf of the South City Lord of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the week of May fourth through ten, two thousand twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Kimberly Picker and Leona Adalos, and to all professional municipal clerks for the services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And with this, I here to set my hand and pause the seal to be affixed on the fifth day of May, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm invited, John, he's doing the research on the government.
Uh, so the few remaining items on the other is how much to contribute to Chatham rescue. Uh, we got there, uh, by next day and, uh, they had seventy-seven thousand in back through thirty-one. Uh, after talking with, uh, Jack and the fire chief, we need them to survive at least four more years. So it would need to be at least thirty-six thousand, but any number higher than that is a G.
We would agree here fifty-four, thirty.
We've never had an agreement. Historically, we've given twenty-five thousand.
We had talked about. Talked about. Response time. Too far.
They did design, um, we settled on a dollar figure. And, uh, it's shot staff to go ahead with the contract before actually a word in contract, it needs to come back to the board for approval. Uh, with that being said, we have taken the numbers from fifty to fifty-five, so board. What is your pleasure?
Fifty-five, fifty-five.
So since I said it's fifty-five, we will go over it. Once we get the contract, we will make it official and one through four.
Your thing that you, uh, might be a trap to the function to our team to adjust contract.
I think we're going with just some sponsor. Thank you for your offer.
And you'll do this.
Yeah, that was the idea in there.
Again, the resolution.
The resolution, it's on the table, Lee.
Yes.
Who wrote the resolution?
See, it runs late. And it was, uh, that particular one they sent us was one of the grand falls used. So I was able to amend that in minutes hours.
Also, we were able to find a one major from the league side as well.
Yeah. I will say, uh, coming back from this association conference, I guess, we this was one of the big topics data. It does respect to Mr. Pugh's question about how we of the landlord does what and where with the digital tool. It is trying to take that authority away from us. And also with legal contrary to what a developer is trying to do. Each and every member can be sued individually. If they try to get us this thing the way it is. So let me give you an example. Right now, we collect, uh, what is called B group. Uh, as a part of working with different developers. At one of the sides that I don't want to give you anything, I don't want to do setbacks, I don't want I want to have outside the group talkers rather than anything crazy that you can worry about. Because the latest thing came into play several years ago. Uh, there was a hardball right beside come up with a way to ensure exactly what, uh, Mr. Pugh had talked about. And so planning in zone, and we came like a little part to where there are designations where certain things cannot be in certain areas, things should not be commingled. And the legislature now is trying to take three steps backwards and deregulate what's built anywhere. So I can go to anybody's house on this board and do a bill that's taking good. And there was pretty much nothing we could do about. It impacts. And so it wasn't the atomic last week, and it was talked about. And we have been asked to join in this resolution to say no.
And just to go through, I'm going to follow up with some. First of all, thank you for going to that conference. So it's not just like it's, uh, and said it that, uh, will take control. To save this place for our town.
Absolutely. It's also it into this as well, equality. And that will standards for the defense and other contaminants that might come up in your water. Talking about algae smell and odor and taste now. And you imagine if they lift all the restrictions that we currently have. You can't drink it all, baby. If that happens, it will be very detrimental to your health. And I think it was a few years ago in Michigan, I believe it was, where the water was full of lead. Repedicating, especially to children. Uh, so these are things that we need to be mindful of. And, uh, anytime you can call your state representative, call him or her up. And say, just say no. Because there's a representative out of Wilford County. I eat the district he represents, I believe, is the hot white area. And he has changed his vote. And that came from the citizens of calling him up and petitioning him and resolution sentences.
That's the only one question I'm writing on this is this is I suppose seventy-sixty-five. But, uh, seven or six of them, I understand, overlaps with seven sixty-five, yes. So she potentially expanded some sixty-five. Two. Take some decisions, I should be able to sort of
Seven sixty-five doesn't pass the rest of the polls, too. Cause there are attachments. Okay, they are attached to it. So seven sixty-five is the main bill. And these are add-on right along, so I'll probably run this file. And we're not further. And I will make sure that we pay close attention. Anytime these attach bills uh, need a secondary, uh, effort from us, then I will alert staff. And you could easily, uh, they're asking for the seven sixty-five because these are attached to the bill.
Essentially, that was the big one.
Yeah, and and everything else is attached to it. They just go have a week, ask that I'm paying attention. So, uh, if we can, uh,
Be saving it all.
Yes, sir.
About the resolution, there was a much cited collection of local government.
It's the move on the second that we adopt the resolution, uh, opposing House Bill six, sixty-five, seven sixty-five. All they live in on my side.
I just, I can't get a word in the joint here. Um, this is being proposed just from one side from NCLM, but they're not talking about any potential benefits of this. They sent the dust just now. I have no time to research this bill. I want to read it. I'm looking to write on something I haven't read up on, and then we'll do diligence looking at this. This is very complicated. And I can't process in five minutes that is put forth to me today. It's very unfair. Guys, you gotta look at this synopsis before, if you're gonna have a gym change or something like that, or something that's this complicated. I need to know. I need time to to read this over. I'm responsible, the constituents, I really don't appreciate this.
Well, no, 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 no. No, I'm gonna tell you why. We were elected to do a job three amendments to pay with the engine. But it's happening around us.
Understood.
And this has been out here for quite some time.
And I
having me mention this.
I didn't think the town was gonna make a resolution opposing it. They've never talked about any benefits. So you guys are simply absolutely.
The governing body of this that we actually all
Which is biased, technically, because it's a better, hey, this is a little governments. It's a biased point of view. I can see you got a different point of view.
That, you know.
Can you wanna hear it?
We already know the margin. It's already, it's about
We're gonna present things to multiple agents in the future. I really appreciate.
They will finish it.
We'll just fix the wrong.
Thank you. Manager's report.
This man, um, we're gonna find, just wanna point out a couple of items. We're in our next, uh, meeting, the May nineteenth. And then just something that, uh, the chief general series thing here that I wanted to decide about is October seventh is gonna be national out. So it's just to be There's several other things that I want to throw those two out. Uh, number two, we got this today as well, and, um, the chief and I and Dylan, I shared with other staff. Uh, DOT is going to propose, I'll just read, I'll tell you. Uh, they would identify North Chatham Avenue, Fifth Street, which is just too far from us here. Uh, because it's Chatham. Uh, it is a candidate for conversion to a stop control intersection, which means instead of having a stoplight, we remove the stoplight and have stop signs. So they're proposing with the stop signs on the Fifth Street directional, Chatham would still be flowing. And what they're going to do is our plan is install stops on the place to see if there was a flash as a problem for two weeks. Take a look at it. So it's not, it's not officially gonna be done. And he was very, they'd like to monitor and get feedback. So I wouldn't give the example. If that's kind of something the chief and and Dylan nationally asked for some additional sign to be sort of of the note ahead, this is gonna be a change. But I feel like it's, that must be in their records that it doesn't want a stoplight. They want me to see if they can do something different. I already need more heads up. We gotta be coming to place. Did you say a star bay chief? I can't remember exactly. I didn't, I didn't see one. So I think I wanted to feedback it for live, but I wouldn't be, not a surprise. And that's all I've got there.
All right. Uh, anything from the board that's trying to give the report from, uh, the
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. I just want to acknowledge, uh, anyone that participated in the uh, brother, I'm sorry, Commissioner Austin and I went over to the DOT this morning in the jar, so gave our thanks to them for partnering with the town and, uh, participation with the leadership, so I just wanted to acknowledge any partner's participation, I mean, ended on April twenty-sixth, I think, and I, I'm not sure how much. I had a little some names, uh, and I know we did have some, some trash picked up during that two week period, so, uh, thank y'all. We're helping keep Southern City clean.
Thank you everybody that involved in that, and we do appreciate, uh, make, trying to make our, uh, outlook better, so again, thanks to everybody for. Anyone else? Okay, last night, I, uh, last week, I had an honor of, uh, giving the, uh, Mayor's Association, uh, conference, uh, it was labeled city vision. And it was laying that for several reasons. One of the things that really sticks out in my mind is the spirit of excellence that they all recommend for each municipality. There is a listing there of different uh, certificates that you can obtain by taking different classes. Advanced municipal leaders certificate programs. Really surprised the number of municipalities ranging from mayor, town, staff, that received those certificates on, uh, last week. Uh, there's next is a certificate of municipal achievement. So each level, uh, gives you a degree of professionalism that I think we really need to start taking advantage of. I don't ever want the same one, I'm paying, uh, people, like, other, uh, uh, you know, it. Don't expect us to be a poor. Well, that's the way I'm, I'm, that's. And so the only way to do that is to actually get involved and take these classes. Mayor's bill, and I, when the only two people there that went to this by themselves. Most of the municipalities had buildings and they had staff. And the reason bringing it is because a lot of these, uh, seminars were going on at the same time. For example, I wanted to go to the rural communities, but right across the hall was, uh, the little housing. And so the young man that I was with, uh, first the old mayor, we went there and I went there and we came back and we got it elaborated. Uh, three more is also a big thing. Uh, this, uh, we saw it on down zoning, as they have laid on it. It's the biggest thing that has hit us in a long time. And we're not very careful. Those things as the rewriting, I like, you know, we would have spent approximately what?
Eighty, ninety thousand.
Well, that's a big thing. That's what this amounts to. That thing is throwing out the window. Uh, the county has already stopped. It is, it is. This thing is going because it's bad. That was now.
Start in January.
Yeah, so we have, we, we're close to having here. So I haven't discussed it, we hadn't talked about it with the board, should we stop, should we proceed? We're really up in that air, we start, starting all over. It's a good thing, give a chance this thing while I pass. So these are things that you get when you get out of your comfort zone, when you get out of Southern City, and when you really drill down on to what's happening around us. And it was, it was just, uh, phenomenal week. It was good to meet other individuals with different ideas and different power processes. And I hope they see pretty much the same problem, and I know you all know what that one is. As a, then we're, uh, one of the sessions that show the difference in the housing costs over the last three years, four years, and it's unreal of what people are waiting for now. And they do talk about that we have, uh, Lord, I believe you didn't take those things. I don't know, I'm probably not there. Secrets that the workers can actually apply for the lower cost of what it actually costs to build that. And, and so they talked about all of these things that can be done to help municipalities in their life. And overall, the way that we work with citizens, I will tell you, that is already completely one of these classes, his name is Sando. Uh, he, he called it, we, we, he can stop, I was thinking, oh, St. Louis name. I wouldn't, I didn't even think about his name. He said, and I'm, and he's, I'm, he's sticking on our stage. But anyway, these are things that make us better for you. Like, these things, gaining this information, coming back, making internal decisions, um. They do one thing, though, uh, they talk about, uh, how you do your salaries. And just so happened, our good people had put together a package of salary increases, benefits, and the whole nine yards that I can actually talk of. We did it, and then, I don't know, you were here that night, we were looking at a three point five, a little increase. You know, it's, well, Jack turned out. It said, the lead just said three point two. So these things are happening in real time, and I'm looking at that with the way staff has handled this, and it made me feel good to be able to talk about it. At this conference. And, uh, so, uh, it was a good conference, I'm looking forward to the next ones. I'm looking forward to some of the who were being able to take part in this, some of the classes, all right. Some of my friends, some of my. But it would be in our interest if we, uh, that is enough information as we could. Another one, it would help me to do a better job of what, uh, I've been elected to do. So that is the synopsis of the, uh, conference, and, uh, if you haven't been the green, go, go down. But then I can get some of that eastern barbecue. It's not like I was there. Quite as good. That's all I have.
Looking, looking.
They've probably moved and checking. Thank you guys for coming.
I don't know, the sandwich prices, but it's like. Yes, well.